We do have a couple individuals that have requested to speak to us. The first one is Corey Staduar.
Yes, my name is Corey Staduar. I was born and raised in Chehalis, Washington. I lived in Seattle for a few years, but most of my life I've lived here. I am a professional court interpreter. I've worked as an interpreter in Spanish and English for the last 26 years. And the reason why I'm here is because I have spoke, you guys can still hear me? Okay, and the reason why I'm here is because a group of citizens and many business owners, and I have been speaking about the importance of making sure that our community opens up. Here's the problem, we are in a state of emergency, but from the data that I've found, the state of emergency is actually due to the lockdowns, not from actual COVID deaths. So the very first thing I want to say is that what I wanted to do was share my screen. I was told that I would have that ability. Can I just try to share that and you could let me know? Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, so are you seeing my, great. Okay, so the first thing that I want to say is that we have a government that is supposed to be of the people, by the people, and for the, and for the people. And unfortunately, what we've been seeing is that our governor, Jay Inslee, under State of Emergency Powers RCW 43.06.220, is given basically the power to impose any order that he would like to do, any order, as long as it is deemed as reasonably, if he reasonably believes that it should be prohibited in order to preserve and maintain life, health, property, and the public peace. And under here, we have, under subsection five, it says, "Any person willfully violating any of the provisions of this order issued by the governor under this section is guilty of a gross misdemeanor." I've worked in the courts for 17 years. A gross misdemeanor has a maximum penalty of up to 364 days in jail, which means that if he were to impose, if his issue was, or if the order that he issued was, "You have to wear a mask, you have to social distance, you can't sing in church", and that's actually one of the orders. It's actually prohibited under this section here. It says that singing, congregational singing, is prohibited in church. I actually am going to admit it, I actually sing in church with a congregation. I don't think that I should be subject to the possible one year in jail, 364 days in jail, for singing, or for not wearing a mask, or not only for not just wearing a mask, for social distancing. If I shake my brother's hand at church, that would feasibly be singing, no mask, and not social distancing, three violations. And these are something, these are things that you can verify if you'd like to. I've spoken with prosecutors, sheriffs, and judges, and they said, "I am correct in the statute", and that, yes, it's possible. Typically, their excuse is, well, they wouldn't really arrest you for that, but we have a pretty big problem, I mean, regarding the infringement of our constitutional rights. The next thing that I want to go to is the actual data, because the reasoning for all of these crazy and excessive, and I would say draconian edicts, the reason is because of COVID, and that we have to make sure that we try to eliminate the possibility of people dying as much as possible. And typically, they give the number of cases, although the number of cases does not necessarily mean that the person was even symptomatic, or that they actually had COVID, because in a bit, I'll show you some of the facts regarding the validity and the accuracy of the actual tests. But here, I took this off of Google, and as of December 31st, 2020, that means all of 2020, only 29 people died from a COVID diagnosis, or with a COVID diagnosis. There's also dispute as to whether how many people really had COVID, or died specifically from COVID. However, we're talking about Chehalis. So what I want to do is show you how many people died in Chehalis. Are you guys aware of how many people have died in Chehalis all year from COVID? I contacted the Lewis County Public Health Department and Social Services, and only two people died from COVID all year in Chehalis. One was 95 years old, and the other was 70 years old. I've also received information that that person had many underlying problems. So in all of 2020, we shut down, destroyed businesses, attacked businesses such as Spiffy's, and all other, and many other businesses. People lost jobs, and two people died from COVID all year. Now, another thing that I want to show is that even of those people, let's say the 29 people in all of Lewis County who had a COVID diagnosis at the time of death, CDC came out and said that 94% of the people who died with a COVID diagnosis actually had underlying conditions or comorbidities. Now, we also know that, and you can do your research on your own, that CDC came out and said that less than half of the positive antibody tests are correct. We hear the word "false positives". Again, if you were to take that and to apply that to the 29 deaths, you would have to, you'd have to realize that, yes, even if there were 29 people who were diagnosed, not all of them were actually, you know, not all of them died from COVID. We also have this next one that I would like to show that talks about clear alternate causes of death.
Of the definition of people dying of COVID, so the case definition is very simplistic. It means at the time of death, it was a COVID-positive diagnosis. So that means that if you were in hospice and had already been given, you know, a few weeks to live, and then you also were found to have COVID, that would be counted as a COVID death. It means that if, technically, even if you died of a clear alternate cause, but you had COVID at the same time, it's still listed as a COVID death. So everyone who's listed as a COVID death doesn't mean that that was the cause of the death, but they had COVID at the time of death. I hope that's helpful.
Now, the reason I'm sharing all of this is because the orders are basically issued in the name of public health, but I have actually data that shows quite the opposite. So here's another thing, we're being forced to wear masks basically everywhere they go, we go. I'm a healthy person, I have no symptoms of COVID, and I am healthy. And there was a study done, 10 million people were tested. Asymptomatic people were found to have not been transmitted. Only 300 asymptomatic cases in the study of nearly 10 million were discovered, and none of those tested positive for COVID. So they say that I'm supposed to wear a mask in order to prevent someone else from getting COVID, but I don't have COVID. I don't have the symptoms, and so I would not be contagious as someone who doesn't have it. Now, again, I discussed the fact that there were two deaths in all of Chehalis in 2020. However, the actual crisis is related to the ramifications of the lockdowns. Suicide prevention, right here, we see that nearly a quarter of the people in the United States are experiencing symptoms of depression. The study shows that in nearly three times the pre-pandemic level, or we're seeing three times higher incidence of depression and suicide. We also have here the Daily Chronicle, "Lewis County Sees a Spike in Deaths Related to Overdoses and Suicides." Again, we have restaurants that are being basically attacked by our governor. They're being threatened with jail time, they're being threatened with large fines if they were to open up. And the reason, and I've spoken with many of these business owners, that they are wanting to open up is because it provides not only a service to the community, but most importantly, it provides jobs for people. And it's, the economic situation is very important also. We also have our sheriff who is speaking on this.
This has been hurtful to our community, to our economics. Our economy is being shut down because our governor has elected to determine who's essential and who's not. So we need to stand up as conservatives, as Republicans. We need to stand up for our constitutional rights, and we need to say enough is enough. Allow our people to go back to work. The data does not make sense. And what I say about the mask, if you feel that you need to wear the mask, I encourage you to wear the mask. Wear it for your safety, if that makes you feel right, but also respect the rights of everybody else. Let them make their choice. This is ourself, we the people, remember that, we the people. Life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, so I am of the same opinion. I am of the exact same opinion. I believe that, I believe Chehalis should open up. I believe that Chehalis should pass an ordinance similar to that of Mossy Rock, where we do not, where we acknowledge that we do not believe that the data, and it is correct, the data does not support that there is an emergency in Chehalis that necessitates these strict draconian orders that are destroying people's businesses. They're destroying people's livelihood, they're also affecting people's, they're affecting us, and many people are becoming depressed. We have suicides, we have drug overdoses. So I don't know if you guys have seen Mossy Rock's ordinance, but the ordinance says that an emergency exists which requires the immediate action for the preservation of public health and safety, public property, and the public peace. However, Section 2 says they're not recognizing it. "The city will not recognize Proclamation 20-25.8 until such time as sufficient COVID-19 information and data is presented to the city that establishes a state of, that a state of emergency exists within the city." I have not seen any evidence that suggests that we have a state of emergency in Chehalis, Washington. We have two deaths. I see positives, but if positive testing means that we should shut down, then that could go on forever, because a positive test does not mean that we have an emergency. The more people that test, the more people are going to be positive. The more people who develop an immunity and had COVID, even if they didn't know it, and have the antibodies, and test positive, I think it's a good thing, actually, the more people become immune. So that is what many, many people, actually, I know very few people in our entire community who believes that we should not open up. So that's what I'm here for. I'm here to say that we need to open up, and it's time for our elected officials to answer to us and to actually tell us how long they are planning on continuing to obey this, because King Inslee is going to do this indefinitely. I don't see any stop. In fact, in his website, on his website, he said that. He said that we are going to continue to social distance, wear masks, and have these specific measures until there's a cure, which I don't believe will have a cure, or until there's a vaccine. And many people have problems with the vaccine also, so that is the huge concern. Are we going to continue to do this forever? How long is this going to last? So that is my request. I ask that you guys all take a look at this order, and that you also start speaking with people in the community, and you start looking at the data to see whether you believe that this is something that you want to continue being accomplices in. Because in my opinion, these are pretty gross violations of our rights. There are many things that we as citizens have a right to do. I have a right to assemble, I have a right to worship in church, I have a right to sing. I have many, many rights, and at this time, they're being violated. So thank you very much for listening.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your comments, your presentation. Any comments from the council?
Corey, just to have a little communication on this. Do you believe that if a city like Chehalis and Mossy Rock did it, they passed that, but Mossy Rock's a target like this, and we're a target like this? If you pass that, you give a sense of protection to the merchants, that the city of Chehalis says it's okay to open, so they're going to be safe from Inslee, no matter what you think of his restrictions. How do you feel about that? Is Corey still there?
You're muted, Corey. If you heard Bob's question, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Oh, yes. Thank you for the dialogue. Here's the way I feel. I feel like every other citizen, I've been completely isolated. I haven't been able to speak with a lot of people, I haven't been able to dialogue with you guys. Everything's been closed. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. The way I feel is this, I believe, we have sanctuary cities in the United States that are allowing people to commit crimes. People who are illegally here, who are committing crimes, they've been deported, come back over and over. Those are federal crimes, coming back after deportation, but we have cities saying, no, we are not going to, we are going to have a sanctuary city, we are going to protect these people. And they do it. They actually order their sheriff's offices, they order their police, and many people to not enforce, and to turn a blind eye. This is actually completely different. I think we need to be a sanctuary city, but it would be the opposite. We would be saying, the crime is what our governor is doing, and we are going to protect our citizens from the violations of their rights. There was actually something that I wanted to share a second ago. And if you allow me to, I will actually share this, my screen again. But again, thank you very much for dialoguing. I think this is extremely important. I mean, we are in a state of emergency. Right here, I don't know if you guys know much about law, but basically, under Section 242, Title 18, it says that whoever under color of law statute, and it goes on to say that it makes it a crime for any person acting under color of law to willfully deprive a person of a right or privilege protected by the Constitution or laws of the United States. So in essence, when our governor said, "You can't go to church, we're closing down Easter, you can't go to church and sing, you can't assemble", in essence, those were violations of our First Amendment rights. So if we were to pass an ordinance, yes, we would be attacked. And we could have Jay Inslee come and attack us, but it would be, in essence, like a sanctuary city. We have cities in, I don't know, San Francisco, places in California, that are saying, "We are not going to deport, we are not going to deport people who violated their deportation order, or they come back." They're protecting those people, but they're protecting them from crimes. I believe that I need to be protected from a criminal edict from our governor. And I guess, I'm not sure what your question was, I do understand, yeah, about the ordinance. The ordinance would embolden, I think. The ordinance would embolden our restaurant owners and people in general to violate our, or defy edicts that are unconstitutional. And I actually encourage everyone to defy any edict that is a violation of their constitutional rights. We have a right to gather, we have a right to sing together and worship. Because our First Amendment says, and I will show you, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of press, or the right of people to peaceably assemble and to petition the government." So they're, in essence, they're violating my right to be able to go to church, to be able to be with my brothers and sisters, and to sing with my brothers. That's a part of my religion and my worship. So as we saw in his order, and his orders are that we have to follow all of the guidelines by the Department of Health, and one of the specific guidelines is that singing with other people, congregational singing, is prohibited. So in essence, what we need to do is start standing up, because if we don't stand up now, it's never going to happen, and we don't know how long these orders are going to last. And so maybe you have some idea, yes, there are going to be ramifications, but I think that passing an order is not a magic pill, but it would embolden people and say, "Hey, you know what, this is our stance. Our stance is, just like the sheriff said, right?" He believes, the sheriff said that he believes that people should wear a mask if they want to, if they don't want, it's their choice. Same thing with going to a restaurant. If I want to go to a restaurant and eat, that's my choice, right? If I'm afraid of COVID, then I'm going to stay home. If I'm afraid that I might be one of the two people who died, I'm not 95, so I'm not afraid of that. But if I'm afraid of getting COVID, then I should stay home.
Corey, could I get you to send me a copy of that?
I actually sent you all, I sent all the PDF, everything I showed. I have it in a PDF file, and I sent it to, I guess Kylie is her name?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she was supposed to give it to all of you guys, I guess.
Yes, Dr. Pope.
I'd like to ask Corey a question.
Go ahead.
Corey, this is from another point of view. This is a view from the medical profession.
Yes.
Before COVID, did we have all these people going to the hospital, as many as we have now?
I'm not sure what your question is.
My question is...
Okay, okay, I'll answer you. We, every year, 8 million people died from tobacco. Last year, 1.5 million people died from tuberculosis.
Well, I'm not, I'm not asking you about the death rate. What I'm asking you about is the medical profession.
Okay.
The medical profession...
I'm not, I'm not a doctor, so you would probably have to tell me that.
I'm not going to talk about the disease.
Okay, yeah, so, no, I don't know.
I'm going to talk about the medical staff who have to take care of these people, who have to put themselves and their family at risk, so that you can have your rights. My question is, do the medical profession have the right to refuse treatment?
I'm not sure I could follow your question. Do they have the right to refuse treatment? That has nothing to do...
If people come in with COVID, who says their rights have been violated, and they didn't take any precautions, do the medical profession have the right to refuse treatment?
I don't know. If you tell someone they need to lose weight, and they weigh 500 pounds and they need to lose weight, and they don't, what about someone who smokes? You tell them they need to stop smoking. I mean, that, that, the question's a little bit, I'm not understanding why you would even say that.
Well, you're not in the medical profession.
You could take this...
We need, we need to be protected, just as much as anybody else.
Okay, so then are you, my question is, then if you tell someone to quit smoking and they get cancer, are you going to refuse to treat them? You don't have a right to violate our constitutional rights just because of that. So answer that question. If you tell someone to quit smoking and they don't smoke, first of all, I don't believe that COVID is nearly as bad as they say. Yeah, first of all, but if you're going to use that comparison, you're going to have to compare that to everyone. Tell them to quit smoking, they get cancer, I'm not going to treat you then. You know what, you got to compare apples with apples.
All right, here, I have a question now. Corey, I have a, I have a business downtown. I've had the liquor control board come in several times, and given me a letter because I don't typically wear a mask, and they gave me a warning. There's a shop in Kennewake, they did the same thing too, they suspended their license for 180 days, so they can't sell. When you, when you, when you tell, if the city tells people, "Yeah, go ahead and open up", how does that help them when LNI comes in and fines them $9,000 a day?
There's the problem. Basically, we have a tyrannical government that is intimidating and weaponizing LNI in order to force us into compliance. There's the problem. For example, if you're not wearing a mask, you can go to jail for a year. You know what, luckily you didn't, but here's the problem. My question to all of you guys is, how long are you guys going to allow this to happen? Suppose they say, "COVID, COVID, we're all dying" for five years. Are we going to continue that? You know, it's, we're just getting used to it, but again, we don't want, here's my point. I don't care if half the people of the world die from it, it still doesn't nullify the Constitution.
Well, here's, here's another issue.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is what happens, liquor control board, they can decide, they can come and grab all my product. I got about $100,000 in booze downstairs.
Okay.
And once they grab that, what do I do?
Well, I'm not a lawyer. I don't think that I need to explain, right?
Well, the point is, Corey, is that, you know, it's great for you to tell people to go ahead and break the governor's rules. I completely agree with you. I don't like them. I don't go buy all of them, but I certainly won't make a proclamation to say, "Hey, hey, come and check out all our businesses downtown Chehalis." The police right now, they don't enforce those rules that the governor has. They don't go in there and kick people out of places. There's people everywhere downtown without a mask, eating food. And what you're asking is first, just tell the governor, bring his, bring his goons down here and start harassing us.
Well, here's, here's the problem. Here's the problem. Our governor is issuing, as a lot of you guys may agree with or not, he's issuing orders that many are very, very excessive. And the way that he is able to do that is, and to keep us into compliance, is by threatening us. So just like you were saying, if you don't wear a mask, the reason you don't wear a mask is because of your, probably, your personal belief, but you haven't been arrested. You could, you could, but they're saying, "Well, you know what, you're probably not going to get arrested." But my question is, how long are we going to allow them to continually do this? How long are we going to allow the economy, livelihood, businesses, and all of these things to be negatively affected for something that is not an emergency? I'm sorry, but two people in 2020 who died from COVID does not, is not an emergency. And I actually agree with Mossy Rock. I don't know, have you, I encourage all of you to talk to Mossy Rock and see what their ramifications are. I know that just because they're small, they're small and we're big, we're going to be at a bigger target. But when do we say, "You know what, it doesn't matter whether you're intimidating us, we have actual values, we actually have principles", and I think that's, that's the key.
Okay, I'm going to bring, I'm going to bring this to a close, because we could argue, we could argue the point all night, but the problem is, there's two big problems with COVID. Number one, it's been politicized, and the second thing is, is money has been attached to COVID things. So that does, that goes into there, but we could discuss it. But the point, the point that I want to bring up, I know Mossy Rock passed this, but I know there are a number of merchants in Mossy Rock that have chose not to open for the very reason that some of the council members have pointed out, and that is, is, well, we may have passed that, but you know what, we still don't get past LNI. LNI can come out and do that. There's also another thing, and it was kind of alluded to partially, but I want to finish that point, and that is, is if we were to pass something alongside, I mean, I have my personal opinions, but I also have my professional opinions, and I have to, when I'm sitting in this chair, exercise professional opinions that represent the citizenry of Chehalis. If we were to pass something, and somebody says, posted the ordinance or whatever you want to put on the wall, and says, "City of Chehalis says I can be open", and the next thing we know, LNI comes down and shuts them down, there's exposure of liability to the city for openly defying. I mean, as much as I disagree with a lot of the things, and I think we will find that I'm in more agreement with you on a lot of things than I am in disagreement, the one thing I think we disagree is the mechanics of how we're going to get out of this. One city passing this, if we were to pass this, this is not going to take care of the problems statewide, and it's not going to take care of the problems citywide. I would submit it will probably cost us a bigger problem, because we could be singled out. Our thing is, is number one, we have to, we have to work with our legislators. We had a chance at the mayor's meeting in December, and I think to everyone, we felt we need to get this state back open. We've all felt it that way, but we have to go about it the proper way, so that, number one, everything gets it done, and everybody is hopefully operating on the same sheet of music, and, number two, they don't have the potential liability coming, coming back on them from LNI, because LNI can, can hefty, it's always the civil agencies that operate through the Washington Administrative Code that can whack a business with some very serious fines. And I would not want to give somebody false hope, thinking they do that. We have to lobby our legislators. These, all of these places have professional organizations that I know, the Restaurant Association has been working with the governor. The problem is, is, and this is a personal opinion, a personal Dennis Dawes opinion, it's got nothing to do with a position I hold. I think the, I think the governor has a very tight circle of people he gets his advice from. And I know that personally, we, the mayors, we wrote a letter inviting him to come down and speak with us, and with the county commissioners. I had a chance to participate in a phone-in, and I asked him personally to come down and meet with us, and I'd sent a letter, and we have received no response. I'm very frustrated that we cannot get the ear of the governor to listen to us. He always says he's listening to everybody and stuff, but we cannot get that ear, and I think it's a very, a very limited group that's getting his ear right now. So he's doing what he's doing. We have to respect the law, and we have to operate within that law and make sure that whatever we do to put pressure, or whatever you want to call, we have to do it the right way, and that's through the legislature who can, can take the action to change his emergency order ability and all of those things. We have to do it that way. Even though we may disagree with everything he's doing, that doesn't mean we can do it the wrong way. And that's, that's why I understand where you're coming from, but I know I, for one, can't afford writing a law that I know is not valid and could get not only the city into situations where we could lose state aid, which, I find it ironic, you mentioned the statue, the sanctuary cities. When the federal government talks about withholding aid for them, they scream, but what's the first thing they do if a city says, "Well, I'm not going to follow that state law", they withhold our aid. And I know we can't afford that as a city, and we certainly do not want to get ourselves... And I know we can't afford that as a city and we certainly do not want to get ourselves giving false hope to our business people, so.
Well, that, yeah, and that's why it's so easy for the governor to force everyone to, into compliance. And that's the biggest problem. How long are we going to, suppose this happens for years and years? We don't know where the end is. So how long are we willing to follow something that many of us believe is not practical and maybe, in my opinion, many violations of our rights? And I guess the other thing is, can we entirely depend on the change coming? If Washington doesn't change, how long are we willing to do that? And I guess my actual question is, are all of you willing to get out in the community and talk to people and, and actually find solutions? Because we're not, basically, we haven't had any solutions. We're just all bowing down because we're afraid of the ramifications. That's what's going on. We're afraid of LNI, we're afraid of funding, right? So basically, those are, those are the problems.
Those are, they're serious issues. I mean, they are. I mean, we, regardless of COVID or not, we still have to supply service to our citizens. We have to provide those core functions that they expect from us. And like I say, I just know I for one, as frustrated as I may be with the governor's actions and his, what he has done, I just can't do something that I think is counterproductive and would actually make the problem worse. And I know you might, probably may not see it that way, but I see we could make the problem worse than it is. So I think it's been a great, I think it's been a great discussion. I just, I don't know, unless the, unless the majority of the council feels differently, I just don't think if we were to pass something similar to what Mossi Rock has done, I don't think that's going to take care of the problem. I think our way is that we need to continue to use the things that we like, the things that we have available to us, our legislative people, our professional organizations. And I don't know, I mean, I did read something, there's one story that you may want to add to your presentation. I see that the governor in New York, who's been in a severe shutdown, gave a State of the State address today. And he basically said, we need to, I don't want to quote him, but kind of paraphrase it, we need to open up the state or there may not be anything to open up pretty soon. And I know, I know. So I'm just saying, maybe there are winds of change out there. I don't know. But I know that everybody has touted his response to everything he's done. He's got a lot of positive press on it. So now that maybe he's changing, maybe that's something that there's going to be a wave across the country that says, maybe we need to take another look at this.
Yeah. My, my only concern, and I think the biggest concern of everyone, is that we do have a process and it's actually being circumvented. And that's the problem. We have our governor who is just continually extending, 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 basically unilaterally. And that's the problem, you know, what if he decides, well, I'm just going to be king, King Inslee, and I'm going to issue these edicts? How long are we going to? Because I totally appreciate the situation that the city's in, but then like you said, there won't be even a city. I mean, if we're, all these, I know thousands, I've actually heard of thousands of businesses throughout the entire state that are bankrupt, that are no longer in existence. And it's, it's a horrible, horrible thing. So I guess my question to all of you is, what will we do if it just continues and, and we have no recourse? Because the governor just chooses to unilaterally make these edicts? Because we, it seems like we're not getting anywhere.
Well, all I know is, I know that you mentioned, if we've talked to our business community, I know we have a very active community Renaissance team. And with funding that's been made available through federal and state, through the COVID Cares Act and stuff, we have worked with them and will continue to work with them to assist them in any way we can to make things, you know, as normal as possible. And of course, that's probably not the best term of words, but to help them get through this time until things, things change. I mean, we could discuss this forever. We went beyond the 10 minutes that we gave you. I do appreciate, I don't want to, I don't want to lessen your presentation. You did a very professional presentation. You were on task and you were on with your time, and I do appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, well, yeah, and I thank you and I just encourage all of you guys to get out more in the community and maybe even have more meetings, possibly even in person. We could, we could social distance 10 feet away or whatever, like they do during debates. And so that we can have the community actually express their opinion, because we felt like we haven't been able to. Because so many things have been shut down and it almost seems like a tactic, oh, shut it down, COVID, now, now we don't have to respond to the community. So that, that's what it felt like. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak. And again, I encourage all of you and possibly as a, to have more town meetings, town hall meetings and things, so that people can actually get out and voice their frustration. Because we do have a state of emergency.
Yes. Okay, Corey, thank you.
Okay, thank you.